Good morning and welcome to City Council's Budget Hearing. I'm Councilman O'Connor. I'll be chairing this morning's hearing and this afternoon's hearing. We are reconvening our budget hearings today. This morning, we're starting with the Pittsburgh Housing Authority, the Parking Authority, and the Sports and Exhibition Authority. I'm going to pass it off to our Budget Director, Bill Urbannick, and then off to the Housing Authority to do a quick overview.
Yes. Thank you, sir. The Pittsburgh Housing Authority of the city is a municipal corporation formed under the United States Housing Act of 1937, charged with providing decent affordable housing for low-income persons. The Housing Authority provides publicly assisted housing comprised of traditional public housing, scattered sites, and Housing Choice vouchers, the Section 8 program. They currently house more than 20,000 Pittsburghers, manage more than 4,000 public housing units, and provide oversight of an additional 900 mixed finance units. The authority's purpose is to develop and make available affordable safe housing and help families achieve the independence they strive for. Reverend Burgess is City Council's representative on the Board of the Housing Authority. The highlights in the 2020 budget. The Housing Authority historically did not have a large direct monetary impact on the city's operating budget. That changed last year. The Housing Authority reimburses the city for services, including $832,000 in 2020 for reimbursement of the 420 Boulevard of the Allies bond, $1.5 million in Public Safety Administration for the assistance in Northview Heights. Additionally, much of the $531,000 that we receive in nonprofit payments for services don't come from the big hospitals and such. That revenue line item is or payments from the Housing Authority for properties that were taken off the tax rolls, such as those approved by council at the end of 2018 for Kelly Hamilton Homes, Allegheny Dwellings Phase One, Northview Mid-Rise, and Glen Hazel Rental Assistance Demonstration Housing Development. With that, there are no capital budget items directly related to the Housing Authority. I'd like to hand it off to the Executive Director.
Thank you. My name is Cass Durbinian. I am the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. I want to introduce my staff. Bernie, you want to introduce your staff?
Bernie McGinley, the Chief Financial Officer.
Ryan Cassidy, Budget Manager.
Darnell Parker, Budget Analyst.
The Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh budget $168,969,250,000 was approved by the Board, the Housing Authority Board. The Housing Authority, as you know, we work with very low-income people. We serve about 20,000 residents. Our Section 8 program, which is Housing Choice Voucher Program, is roughly about 6,000. And then we have roughly about low-income housing, mixed developments, consists of about 3,000 residents. We consistently work with city, city council, the mayor's office, and community leaders and foundations and universities, and working out different strategies to improve affordable housing in the City of Pittsburgh. Currently, we are finishing up a development in Homewood. As you know, we received a Trust Neighborhood Award from the government, HUD, of $30 million, and that would build out 342 units. We are finishing up the second phase, which will consist of 150 units. We're also looking on the north side to redo Northview High Rise, which is currently located in Northview. We're also looking at opportunities in Manchester. And at the same time, we just received about 20 scattered site housing throughout the city, and I believe we have about 20, 22 more that we are working on. We provide self-sufficiency programs, which allow our residents to have the opportunity to move up into the world, to seek self-sufficiency, and change the trajectory of their family as the kids get involved with the schools, the school system, and also out there, school programs. We also work with home ownership. I believe last year, we had 20-plus residents of the City of Pittsburgh who purchased homes, and our goal for this year is 30. We probably have around about 15 to 20 now. I believe we have 15 complete, and we have five in the process of being processed. Again, the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, you know, is a partner of the city, URA, all the authorities, and we work together as one Pittsburgh to bring services, opportunities, home ownership, and provide affordable housing in the City of Pittsburgh. Any questions?
Thank you, Director. We're joined by Councilwoman Harris. Councilwoman, do you have any questions?
I just wanted to ask you about Northview. Is the location still going to be the same, and the building still be the same as the used shape?
Okay. Where we at now is we still processing information. As you know, we was going to take down the original building. We still going to do that?
We have to.
We have to. We have no choice. And we've been working with HUD. They say we can put 42 units back, and we have to put 42 units off-site. And so, we are looking at some other areas in the city to put the other 42 units, but we're gonna, I believe, we're gonna keep 42 units on-site.
Okay. Out of how many do we have in the high-rise?
I believe it's 87.
Seven, okay.
Eighty-seven. It took us about two, three years, you know, get this process done. But HUD concern was, what their standards is to make sure there's enough support systems in the areas that the families can enjoy. So, I believe that we're gonna be able to put 42 back, put 42 units close to support centers like hospitals and shopping and those type of things.
Okay. Well, if HUD feels that way, just like I've said before, then HUD shouldn't have built it where they built it in the first place. But, you know, as I hear from the people that live up there, they enjoy where they're at, and they want to stay where they're at. They feel that the buses take them exactly where they need to go. They know how to get there and how to get back. Sometimes, a place might look like it's a better area because you don't know the north side, but it's not as convenient as how the buses run. So, I mean, has HUD been here actually?
Yeah, they did come here for a visit, and I took them up to Northview and introduced them to the residents, and they got opportunity to look at the place. But, my fight is not over. You know, this is where I'm at right now. And as you know, the Housing Authority always find aggressive ways to get things done.
If you need me, you know I'm here.
Okay, I know.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, there's people that still live up there that I went to high school with, and, you know, they want to live there. They choose to live there.
I know. I'll stay in residence up there.
Right. So, and I just want to say, you and your staff have been wonderful to work with.
Thank you.
Not just this year, but since I've been here and you've been here. Now, the reimbursement, is that one-third?
The reimbursement, tell me for the...
Boulevard of the Allies.
Yes, well, I guess you can say one-third. It's based upon script footage, and so, I guess you can say one-third, one-third, one-third. But, you know, everybody have a percentage. But, there are other things that went into the calculation, but the deal is fair.
Such as the exercise room?
Well, I think I...
I heard that that was going to the Housing Authority, and...
Well, the other thing is to realize that, and in most organizations, let me explain. Okay? Okay, most organizations, your healthcare...
They're in better shape at the Housing Authority, is basically what you're saying, yes.
But for the public, by having the health center there, it reduces how much we have to pay to the health providers. If you have people who are participating in preventive health maintenance, it reduces the cost that the government has had to pay for health care for its citizens.
Yeah. Well, I heard that's off-limits to the City of Pittsburgh, only the Housing Authority and...
URA.
URA get to use the exercise room.
No comment.
And you guys had that planned, like boom, as soon as you went over into the building. And the 1.5, Public Safety, that's you're giving us?
The 1.5 is something that you and I worked on, as you remember. We have the police Public Safeties Center up at Northview. It has been very, very, very successful. The residents have received the police officers, and we helped build the relationship, community policing in the City of Pittsburgh, and this was the test program.
Right.
And as a result of this, I believe the mayor said he gonna add on two or three more. And so, this experiment that we all participate in paid big dividends, especially to the residents of Northview, and also the kids who get a chance to interact with police officers and build relationships, and they will be future police officers for the City of Pittsburgh in the future, because their relationships with the police officer have been very positive. And as you know, with Officer Hill, all the things that he did while he was there.
Okay. Well, thank you again, and I am so glad that the Public Safety piece worked out, because there's good and bad, no matter who you are. And I think it has made people feel much better to get to know some of our officers.
It's a plus.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thanks for the good work.
Thank you.
Director Onorato, head to the Parking Authority.
See you later.
Thank you, guys. Now, we're going to head to the Pittsburgh Parking Authority. Budget Director Urbannick, do you want to read a brief overview?
Yes. Thank you, sir. The mission of the Parking Authority of Pittsburgh is to provide and maintain affordable, safe, and clean public parking throughout the City of Pittsburgh, to uniformly enforce parking ordinances and laws of the city, and Commonwealth, and collections thereof, to advance the economic progress of the region, and to do so with the utmost commitment to customer service. The Parking Authority is responsible, and I may get this wrong, so just make sure I get them right. The Parking Authority is responsible for 11 parking garages, 34 off-street lots, one attended parking plaza, the Mon Wharf, over 9,000 on-street metered parking spaces, and 33 residential parking program districts, and also oversees the operation of the Pittsburgh Parking Court. Councilwoman Erica Strasburger is council's representative on the Parking Authority Board. The 2020 budgetary highlights, the Parking Authority provides a number of revenue sources to the city. Parking Authority tickets, $8.8 million, an increase of 6% over the 2019 budget. Daily parking meters, $9,575,000, an increase of 1.4%. The authority payments, which have remained the same since 2018, $1.9 million, and the Wharf parking, $383,960, a 2% increase over last year. Parking Authority also collects the 37.5% parking tax on all P.P., Pittsburgh Parking Authority parking lots and garage receipts from the patrons.
All right. Thank you. Just Director, before you start, you guys are always accommodating to a lot of different things in the city, and I want to thank you for, you know, you've been there for a long, long time, but you guys are always helpful in trying to make it work for special events in neighborhoods, for, you know, doing parking diversion so that we can do development with affordable housing. And I just want to say that, you know, you guys do a very good job, and, you know, all the upgrades that you made, obviously, we're getting more revenue into the city, but it's a credit to you. So, I'll pass it off to you, and then Councilwoman probably has a couple of questions.
Well, thank you. Bill, you were actually pretty on target with all the statistics. The only one I would add is probably overstated the surface lot since we sold about two. So, we're down to about 32. And we also enforce the street cleaning as a program, along with the RPP program. With that, the city, you know, we're not subsidized by the city, and the city doesn't subsidize us. We just passed our 2020 budget last month, or this month, and we passed two budgets. We passed an operating budget of $57.7 million and a parking court budget of $10 million, .5 million, for a total of $68.2 million. We also have a capital budget in the, it was approved of $8 million, and that does not include the main project for 2020 and 2021, is the demo and replacement of the Ninth and Penn Garage. It's totally demoed now, and we're in the process of the design and awarding contracts for construction. Along with that, as Bill noted, we have signed a co-op agreement with the City of Pittsburgh, and in that agreement, through the line items of the real estate tax, parking licenses, parking taxes, and pilot payment, Wharf revenue, on-street meter revenue, and parking court revenue, the authority's projected budget, projected on the 2020 budget will be $29.4 million to the city through those line items. 2019 will bring in about $29.7 million on those same existing line items. And just want to note that, again, we were the first U.S. city to introduce pay-by-play technology for its full meter operations in the U.S.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Well, I'm glad we're sitting across from each other. If you remember the pension, we almost lost our Parking Authority in the final hours. We got to keep it, and how much is coming in now after the payments? I mean, we have the payments there for the pension, but how much now is coming in over that amount?
I don't think our payments are directly into the pension fund. It's my understanding is the parking tax over all the city collects is directed towards the pension fund, and that's ours and the private operators. We signed a co-op agreement with the line items I noted to commit in 2020, $29.4 million with those seven or nine line items.
Okay. And that is in the amount or over the amount?
I believe the co-op agreement has guaranteed $25 million, so it's over what the co-op agreement has.
Okay. And I really don't have many questions for you. Every question I have, I either come to you or someone on your staff, and I have to say, you've been wonderful to work with, and I'm glad you're there.
Thank you.
If I could just ask David one question. How much parking tax do you collect from the users of the authority lots and garages as well?
This parking tax would be $10.2 million in our 2020 budget.
Did you see that as the same as the previous year, pretty flat?
There may be a little decrease due to the offline of the Ninth and Penn Garage, so the parking taxes, 586 spaces are offline right now.
Yeah, I just noticed a sort of a flattening of the parking tax over the last couple of years that it hasn't done. It's typical to plus percentage increase on an annual basis, and I understand the one garage being offline, but do you see any other reason that could be?
No. Basically, we're at 95% at all our facilities on a daily basis for workday, so we have to create turnovers for that revenue line item to increase.
Thank you. Final question. On the Wharf, there's an increase. How, how did you get the increase on the Wharf?
From '19 to '20. The '19, the prior year, we had significant flooding, and it was closed for approximately 42 days, and we're not anticipating it closed that many days this year.
Thank you.
I think we budgeted 15 or 20 at the most.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Director. All right. Let's move on. Sports and Exhibition Authority. Thank you, Dave.
I'll go ahead and start off, if you don't mind, Councilman. The Sports and Exhibition Authority is the successor to the Public Auditorium Authority of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County. The name was changed in November 1999 as the SCA began working with Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the City of Pittsburgh, and Allegheny County to implement the Regional Destination Financing Plan. The plan supported the construction of PNC Park, Heinz Field, and the expansion of the David Lawrence Convention Center, as well as the infrastructure improvements associated with these projects. The SCA-owned facilities include PNC Park, Heinz Field, PPG Paints Arena, the David Lawrence Convention Center, the site of the former Mellon Arena, North Shore Riverfront Park, and two North Shore parking garages. The SCA consists of seven members, three of whom are appointed by the city and three by the county. The seventh member is appointed by the city and county jointly. Councilman Anthony Coghill is City Council's representative to the SCA. The operating budget of the SCA, operating budget impact, the SCA collects much of the city's amusement tax revenue, approximately $8.3 million projected for 2020, as well as other taxes at their properties. The city no longer subsidizes the Sports and Exhibition Authority's debt service, which we had for a number of years. Capital budget impact, the SCA is the project manager for the I-579 cap project. The city is not paying for any of the construction costs, but will be responsible for significant operating and maintenance costs upon the completion of the new park and bridge.
Thank you. Now, we'll pass it off to the famous Mary Contoro, who's, you know, if you're a sports fan in the city, you know, Mary's not on the field, but everything that operates in the city and all of our sports teams and all of our facilities wouldn't happen without the great work that her and her staff do. So, I just want to thank you. I was on the Stadium Authority, and you were very helpful there, and you're helpful all across the city, and, you know, obviously, you see all the revenue that comes in by having these great facilities in Pittsburgh. So, thank you so much. I do have one bone to pick with you. I did apply for the general manager position at the Pirates, and I did not get it. So, you know, next time the job opens, I would like a little bit more support, but maybe the manager's job is what I should hold out for. So, next time. But, Mary, again, thank you for all that you do. If you just want to give us an overview, and I'm sure Councilwoman has a couple of questions for you.
So, you mentioned Stadium Authority and SCA. So, we do jointly both authorities. And so, some of the, on the, with respect to the Stadium Authority, there's a new development happening on the North Shore that'll be starting in the spring, and that is the result of the option agreement that the Stadium Authority has with the Pirates and the Steelers. We're excited about that new eight-story building that will include residential, which is the first time we've got residential going on the North Shore there. We also jointly with the URA work on the development for the Lower Hills site. The URA is taking the lead on the first two developments there, but something should be happening there shortly next year as well. And then, as you mentioned, we're overseeing the construction of the cap. So, in addition to the amusement tax that you mentioned, we also, by way of the three standalone parking garages and surface lots, also generate parking tax for the city, about $7 million last year is what our numbers show. And of the four major sports facilities in the North Shore Riverfront Park that we also own, the sports facilities and the convention center, the attendance over there for calendar year 2018 was about 3.4 million people. And as you're right, for a while, the city and the county had guaranteed some bonds, and we're making small payments. That is no longer the case. Those bonds have been retired.
Thank you. Councilwoman, do you have any questions?
Morning, Mary.
Morning.
Haven't really seen you much since I'm not on the SCA anymore, but I love watching the projects come up, and I know you're such a hard worker. On the no longer subsidizing the debt, what was those numbers?
Well, those were, that was actually under $200,000 for the last couple of years, yeah.
Okay. And the eight-story building, I did want to ask you about, is that higher than the garage for the casino?
I don't recall how high that garage is.
Can you sort of get, get me that information? Because some have asked about that, and the location. Where exactly is that going?
It's on Mazarovsky Way, at the North Shore and Mazarovsky Way, so along the PNC Park side.
Okay. Okay.
And the whole height of it and the setback is all being planned according to the riverfront zoning ordinance.
Well, I guess the concern is, you know, those that live on the hilltops, they don't want to lose their view, so...
I'll get that information for you.
Yeah, if you could, I'd appreciate it. But, thank you, and your staff always for what you do.
Great staff and good board.
Wonderful staff.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Mary. I think Bill has a question for you.
Yes, Mary. Similar to the, you are one of the larger collectors, largest collectors of the parking tax, along with the Parking Authority and URA as well, as well as many private entities out there. I noticed a flattening of that tax over the past couple of years, and I'm wondering if that's indicative in your numbers, or have you seen a growth?
I actually don't know that... Roseanne, do you have a feel for whether the parking tax has flattened or not?
Well, I have raised, raised for a while, and those are facilities are pretty close to maximum, so I would think that's why they're flat. We'll see next time how the increase is seeing an increase in the parking.
And the other thing that happens with us is as development happens, we lose spaces. So, that would also show a loss in the parking tax.
Yeah, that would typically say you may need to bring things up.
Yes. But, we'll take a look at that and get back to you on that.
And the, as well as the amusement tax as well, too, seems to be flat over the past couple of years, and I'm wondering if there's anything that is missing in the tax. I know we have to keep up with some of the performers. We've made amendments to the, to the ordinance itself to help to accommodate that. Are we still seeing folks avoiding paying the tax, or are we just seeing maybe a little bit less, or possibly not being in the playoffs for some of the sports teams? You know, it could be one of those.
That does impact things, yes.
I just didn't know if you had any additional insight.
No, but again, we'll take a look at that. Amusement tax is something that doesn't actually flow through us like the parking tax does, but we'll take a look at our numbers and see if there's anything there that seems noteworthy.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You're saying there's no chance this year?
I will. We'll keep our fingers crossed.
We don't have a quarterback, but yeah, it's all right. Yeah, we'll see, we'll see.
The Penguins, though, they...
Yeah, we'd never know. Well, thank you, Mary, for coming. As usual, you guys do a really good job over there. We got to give a shout-out to two students that fell asleep from Chatham. Thank you for coming. And now, I'm going to recess this, and we will reconvene this afternoon at 1:30. I'll be chairing two other authorities... Two other authorities are coming in, PWSA and Alkasan. So motion to recess.
Move down second.
All right.